Making every single argument that's out there and seeing what sticks. And in this case, what stuck for me was the value of greening, the improved aesthetic of the planters for the protection. And I wasn't deterred or as concerned because the difference in terms of the numbers was fairly minimal.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just had a discussion yesterday with one of the representatives of some businesses down there and some properties. And I just wanted to ask a question if one of my colleagues is willing to answer. It's a legitimate question about this. Could you remove the center-planted medians and have four lanes but still keep the planter-protected bike lanes? Or is this at the point where -- because my biggest interest is the planter-protected bike lanes, pedestrian, bicycle realm. Would you be able to remove the center-planted medians in order to make it four lanes rather than three? And I don't know if anyone wants to answer that, but I believe I know the answer, but I just wanted to check.
We don't have anybody from Public Works staff here, I don't think. So, Councilmember Goodman?
The answer is no.
All right. Thank you. And in that case, you know, for me personally, I'll be supporting this. You know, I think there would be, if we could get rid of the center-planted medians, add another lane, that would be something I'd be open to. But at the end of the day, I think having the planter-protected bike lanes and the maximized pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure is the most important factor in this for me.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam President. Before we vote, I just wanted to say that we've come a long way in Minneapolis where we're not debating whether or not to put a protected bike lane on this corridor. And that's because of the support from all of my colleagues here and all of the people in this room who've been working very hard for many years to build the support that we need to have a multimodal transportation network in Minneapolis. And with the support of councilmembers Goodman and Frye, we've been able to, like I said, get to a point where we're not talking about whether or not to put a protected bike lane here. This is one of the corridors that was on our adopted protected bike lane network that the city council unanimously adopted last year, thanks to the leadership of Councilmember Reich and the chair of that committee. So I think we're coming a long way. Some of us got involved in looking at our streets and particularly bicycle infrastructure when a lot of bike lanes were being removed in downtown. And that was because we were building out the overall system. We were building transit investments that are really important for our community that I think all of us are glad that are there and support. But now we are kind of writing that situation where we have not had a dedicated bicycle facility on the eastern portion of downtown for a lot of folks who are coming from neighborhoods that are west of the freeway, where it's really difficult to get over to Park in Portland. You have to go significantly out of your way. So it's really filling a huge gap in our downtown bicycle network. It's an important project. It took a lot of leadership from a lot of people. And we had to add it into the budget. The mayor put funding for this in the budget. That was approved by the council. So I'm excited that I will soon be bicycling in a protected lane instead of weaving through dangerous traffic on Third Avenue.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Bender's motion? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami?
No.
Goodman?
No.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmasano?
No.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Nay.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Nay.
President Johnson?
No.
There are six ayes and seven nays.
That motion fails. Back to the main motion then. On item number seven, any further discussion? Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you, Madam President. I have a motion I'll pass out before you that might strike some kind of compromise on this. I'll read it and see if we've got a second. Maybe we can discuss it a little bit. I'd like the opportunity to at least make my case briefly. But this would be to move forward with a pilot of the original layout for the Third Avenue, south of Eighth Street, that would include three vehicular travel lanes, one in each direction with a center turn lane, the retention of the existing center-planted medians, and a buffered ballard-protected bike lane, one in both directions. And further directing staff to study the traffic impacts of the four-lane to three-lane conversion over the course of 2016 and return to the council in the first quarter of 2017 with a recommendation for installing the planter-protected bikeways or removing the center medians and returning to a four-lane layout. If I could have a second, I'd like to make the case.
Is there a second? Councilmember Gordon's motion's in front of us.
And I just want to speak to this a little bit. This is an idea that didn't necessarily originate with me, but it reminded me of what we did with Riverside Avenue when we were going to make that conversion. We actually took a full year where we painted in the new design of having the bike lanes. They weren't protected bike lanes, but we painted in the new design of the two and then left-turn lanes, conversion from four lanes. So we were able to try it so the businesses involved, the community involved, and Public Works could see if it might work on Riverside Avenue. And at the end of that year, we did a review and we discovered that it had worked. And so when we did the reconstruction of Riverside Avenue, that's how we did the reconstruction. So I think this would give us an opportunity where we'd give the businesses, the community, the commuters, all of us, a chance to see, would it really work with three lanes? Obviously, the council's divided on this, seven to six. Maybe if we all had a chance to see how it worked or didn't work for a year, not only could the council come to more greater unity about this, but the community might as well. And I think that the businesses could see that, well, all right, we'll look at it for a year, we'll understand that, and the property owners in that area, and realize that then they can come back and say, we were right, told you so, it absolutely didn't work, and then we can proceed with this four-lane conversion. My fear is if we do it now, there isn't any, really, isn't any going back. And this is a chance for us to see if it will work by letting us do an experiment.
Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam President. As you know, I was a strong proponent of the three-lane option. However, I don't think undergoing a pilot for an entire year is advantageous either to our traffic system or for the cause of improving bike transit. As we saw through the statistics, there is a difference. In fact, in some cases, there's a substantial difference between the status quo and either the four-lane option or the three-lane option. And, you know, speaking as someone who's trying, going to be strategic to get more and more protected bike lanes and greening downtown, I think that if we're simply going to add a bunch of jersey barriers for a year, see a somewhat substantial increase in traffic congestion, then the votes and people's mentalities are only going to shift away from the bike-friendly network. Not to mention, I think it's probably delaying the inevitable. So while I would strongly prefer the three-lane option on the southern portion, I don't think that it's worth, I don't think that it makes sense to wait around another year. I think we should be moving forward to concentrate on other big wins like Hennepin.
Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam President. I support the motion because I believe our professional engineers' traffic analysis that showed that three lanes functions the same way as four. I think I understand why a councilmember from this area wouldn't want to go through a year of kind of more feedback and discussion about this, but I think in the end that this would show that traffic is moving okay through downtown. And I think in reality, rather than tearing out the medians and putting in the plastic sticks, we would just have the medians plus plastic sticks. So as somebody who hopes that we can get to the better version in the end, I think it's worth trying for a year, and I support the motion.
Councilmember Gordon?
Just wanted to be clear that I don't think jersey barriers are involved in this. I'm talking about the ballard-protected bike way that we're having on the rest of it. So it would be similar to what's going to be put in permanently on the rest. And if 12 months is too long, I'd also entertain a motion to make it nine or six or whatever will work in the interest of compromise, I think, and getting more knowledge that I'm certainly willing to compromise with the 12-month proposal if that seems like it's too long a time to give us the opportunity to try a pilot and an experiment and really see what happens. And I think what our numbers and our predictions have borne out and what I've seen in my area is we're not going to see an increase in traffic congestion. I think we're going to see probably an improved traffic flow.
Councilmember Frye?
Sorry, Madam President, I didn't mean to do that.
Okay. Any other discussion on Councilmember Gordon's motion? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami?
No.
Goodman?
No.
Frye?
No.
Palmasano?
No.
Gordon?
Yes.
Kano?
Yes.
Reich?
No.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Nay.
President Johnson?
No.
There are five ayes and eight nays.
That motion fails. Back to item seven then. Third Avenue redesign project, layout approval, cost estimate, direction to proceed, and easements as brought forward from the Transportation and Public Works Committee. Further discussion? Councilmember Goodman on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to thank staff, and I also just want to have a special shout-out to Ethan Folly, who I think does a great job of representing the bike coalition and trying to find balance between where a lot of different conflicting interests lie. I do think that a lot of good has come out of this. In the end, we are getting what we set out to get, which is a protected bike lane. And that was the goal from the beginning, and we should be calling this the victory that it is. In addition to that, we are reducing lanes from five lanes to four lanes. So we're actually getting less lanes of traffic in the scheme of things, and none of the alignments were marginally better for pedestrians since the curb line's not changing. So we're not going to have more space for pedestrians under any of these plans, unfortunately. And that is a scary shadow of what's to come on Hennepin Avenue where they're actually talking about removing space for pedestrians in order to put in protected bike lanes. So that'll be an interesting conversation. I'll note, and I feel like I have to almost defend myself, that in the years that I have worked here, the very first thing I did on the city council was pass a change in the city's bike policy to allow bikes on Nicollet Mall. When I first came to the city council, bikes were prevented from being on Nicollet Mall, and that was one of the very first things that I authored when I came here. I'll also note that as a Hennepin Avenue resident for 20 years, I argued for and pushed for the pathetically bad bike lanes we have on Hennepin Avenue and First Avenue right now. When everyone opposed doing anything on Hennepin or First Avenue, including pretty much every business owner along First Avenue and most of them along Hennepin, I supported it, tried to make it better, got an exception to paint it green, tried to figure out how to keep buses out of those lanes, and worked for years to try to make that work, which is perhaps why I'm motivated to try to have a final fix on that once and for all. I'll note I also advocated for and won the connection from 12th Street around Loring Park and have a bike lane going in on the new Hennepin-Lindale reconstruction. I was probably one of the most influential people in the financial and staff decision to complete the Cedar Lake Trail in my ward, which was a multimillion-dollar effort on behalf of the state and local and federal government to complete one of the most important links, transit and bike commuter links into downtown in the city. So I have a very long track record of supporting bike projects, being kind of the overweight-not-biker that I am. I think it's really important for the city to focus on increasing the number of people who bike. But I want to call a win a win, and this was a win because the business community didn't fight the bike lanes. They were just concerned about this concept of a lane diet. And it's been pretty clear from the get-go that this has gone from a bike project to a greening project, now to a lane diet project. And if we want to have a lane diet project, I'm all for it, then let's discuss it as it is and not call it a protected bike lane conversation and clearly not call it a greening conversation. No one cared about those medians more than me and the property and business owners that put them in. $250,000 per median put in by Accenture, put in by Ameriprise, put in by Heinz. They paid for the capital, and they pay to maintain them. And currently, the business community through the DID is paying to maintain them as we speak. I had said to the media, and I'll repeat again, usually they don't eliminate the things you do until you're gone from office or maybe even dead. And so it's painful for me to have to see the work that my office did under the amazing leadership of Beth Munich, who was an intern in my office at the time, to get those Third Avenue medians in. And quite frankly, I would expect that the business owners now would consider how they can improve their blocks through greening in the pedestrian realm, further separating pedestrians from the street going forward. I think in the end, we've won. And the fact that we haven't won enough makes me sad. And the fact that there's this feeling it's not good enough is kind of unfortunate because that's where the divide comes. We have a lot of people who agree on a lot of things and a lot of people who have worked on these kinds of projects over a long period of time. In the end, Councilmember Frye and Councilmember Gordon will be biking in a safer environment than they are now. I don't agree that they should be biking in the gutter, and I think it's terrible that the situation is what it is, and I hope that we can fix it and be happy about it. But we shouldn't be calling a spade a spade here, and this is a victory. And we should be taking it as a victory and trying to figure out how we can improve the process next time rather than trying to blame and insult business owners and property owners and call them cowards and tell them they're afraid of change. They're getting a lot of change as it is, and they also pay for that change. And I think demonizing people in the community for not being good enough on issues many good advocates care about is not the way to bring people together.
Councilmember Reich?
Thank you, Madam President. You know, taking sort of the broad view of why we were motivated to work in this sort of expedited process to get something through downtown with exceptional resource allocation, we really said we have to get through downtown, and it won't be easy. And if we aren't taking bold, strong moves to get through both budgetarily and in terms of process, it might, wouldn't, there's a strong chance it wouldn't happen, and it certainly would delay follow-up lanes that we have to get through downtown as well because our work isn't quite done. In addition to that, it's not just getting our protected lanes through downtown and all the sort of complications and difficulty that that implies. We have to make sure that these throughways, north-south throughways through downtown, actually properly connect to the communities that they connect to. And so the Third Avenue, I'm very excited about that because it directly links to some of the improvements that have made along Third Avenue Bridge and Central Avenue. However, even when we put that in, which was the first of its kind on a trunk highway, there's intersections that we knew we would have to come back to, to improve. And certainly, I would say that though sometimes we celebrate the plastic bollards and sometimes we say they're just not that good, and we kind of poo-poo them, at the end of the day, that's one of the tools we have, and it's one of the tools we have to create safety and to do so with a certain amount of aggressive mileage that we've identified in our plans. And so I would never want to discount the bollards as a technique, particularly for the rest of the system that we have that we're implementing them. Are we telling communities that if you don't get some other enhanced protection, that you're getting some kind of inferior protection? I don't think we would say that. So for the four blocks where we contemplated an enhanced system, that's great, and it seems like there was some conflict about that and the impacts of that. But my purpose was, as kind of stated by others, was we needed to get this done, we needed to get it done now, and then really roll up our sleeves and move forward with the next one, which is going to be Hennepin Avenue. I would state also that when you take the big picture view, I suppose you could call it a win, but we're really just doing what we said we'd do. And I'm glad we're doing it on a very quick basis. It seems like when we talk about the system, I think Councilmember Bender has pointed out, we have created consensus that wasn't there. And I think even more recently, we've created more consensus that wasn't there. As a matter of fact, it's becoming a sort of a given. I've heard that phrase. I guess it's a given we're going to implement our bike plan by people who may have been skeptical about our will to do so. Maybe we're skeptical, like, well, they come around my neck of the woods, maybe I can challenge it. But now I've heard from so many different parties, it seems like it's a given. And so that amount of work that we've done and that sort of element of political will and implementation has not just taken the council or the staff or the department to a certain direction. I think the city has now come and found itself in a consensus and a new sense of purpose and direction around not just bike lanes but protected bike lanes, not just one or two, but a system. And I think that's the thing that I really keep my eye on the prize, as it were. It's the system. It's not any given lane, it's the system. And I see a lot of work that we have to do with, even though the significant sort of piece of the system. As a matter of fact, working with Councilmember Gordon and the folks on our pedestrian advisory, they said, you know what, we're talking a lot about the bike lanes, but, and we do have some, you know, intersection issues that have been highlighted, but what about City Hall? What kind of experience is City Hall for the pedestrian? Well, guess what? It's one of the worst in the downtown area, if not the city. And so significant work to be done because you have, you know, physics, the building goes very close, you have some right-of-way and area-of-way issues. But what we've said through staff direction and commitment from the department, we're going to look at that. We're going to spend time, money within this project to see how far we can push the ball. And if we don't push it far enough, we're going to go further and create an additional project to make that work moving forward. And I think we said, no matter what, I think we said we're going to do it no matter how much engineering it's going to take and how many resources it's going to take, we're going to find some resolution around that. And so I don't want to get that lost because that's truly unfinished business for this sector, City Hall itself and how it works. Of course, the intersection that Councilmember Bender pointed out at Fifth, that's also work that's not going to be completely resolved with this project and will be subsequent work to get that flow-through going. And a lot of that's about timing and light engineering and stuff that's way more boring than the things that we've been debating today, but very necessary to get done. And that is additional work and commitment to make it work for all the different modes and users. And I think more provincially speaking, I want to work with Councilmember Bender and Frye to say that at the edges where we have work to be done, even where we have a lane system to the north, that it's not completely right, particularly at particular intersections. And we knew that. We wanted to get the main path laid out, and Sean Murphy at the time said, no, we're going to have to come back, and we're going to have to, about, there's about six intersections that are not quite to our city standard because it was MINDOT project. We pushed for it, they implemented it to their standard. So we have to do that work. And then moving south, because I want to enjoy the, what was once called the Avenue of the Arts, to go into the exciting community of Whittier where you have the Institute of Arts, you have all those wonderful things on each street. We still have work to make that connection as well, and then it's going to take some time and resources as well. Now is the time to do it because we've got this backbone going through downtown Minneapolis, and we did it in a short order. So probably more than I usually say, but obviously, this is very important, and I want to make sure that we're determined to do the work moving forward.
Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much, Madam President, and I appreciate, Councilmember Reich, that you took that time to highlight some of those things, looking at the future and also looking at the City Hall block. I'll just confess that a couple minutes ago, right after my great compromised pilot idea of testing something out, was so soundly defeated by my colleagues, I was ready to just vote no on the whole thing. But luckily, I've got a chance to listen to you and to think about, you know, the long-range plan here and what we're after, and also remember all the significant improvements that are being made in this plan. So I'm going to support this. I think it's significant that we're addressing a really critical bike need downtown and have a protected bikeway, not as good as I'd like. I mean, I just want, I hope it's clear, I'm doing this with some reservations and some objections, everybody understands that. But I do think it's a great step in the right direction, and I do think that having this resolved like it is now is going to help us as we move to Hennepin. I do know that we have the City Hall block that we still have to deal with for pedestrians. I really want our pedestrian advisory and bicycle advisory committees and businesses to feel like they've been part of this discussion and they've been listened to, and I've got myself to voting yes. And I think I'll just leave it there for now, and I appreciate everybody's work on it.
Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam President. Just briefly, as we talk about moving forward in the future on similar projects like this, I think we need to commit ourselves to improving the process that we use to design our streets. And that's why I'm glad that Councilmember Reich and Worsami and Gordon and I are working on our Complete Streets policy. It's really a process document that talks about how we can do a better job of engaging all of the stakeholders that use our roadways as we design our streets. And I think Washington Avenue is a perfect example of when stakeholders, and this was a long, it was, you know, five years ago, but it's a million years in terms of our evolution as folks who care a lot about streets. That was the first project where I think the downtown business community came together with folks who care a lot about greening and living downtown and bicycling downtown and walking downtown and advocated for a better design process from a county-managed project. And what we saw there was, I was at the first meeting, we saw all of those different stakeholder groups come together around a shared vision that reflected the goals of the Downtown Council's 2025 plan, that reflected the needs of people, the thousands of new people who are living downtown, and reflected the needs of so many of our constituents who live near downtown and come into work every day, who are part of what's fueling the renaissance of our downtown, all of those young, smart folks who live in my ward and Councilmember Frye's ward and Councilmember Reich's ward around the city, who are really building the future economy of our city. They are walking, they are biking, they are taking transit. We are seeing people drive less and less and less. But, you know, again, that didn't even have to factor in here because the folks who are driving on this road would not have been impacted by the three-lane version. So as we go forward on these other streets, I note that our Bicycle Advisory Committee and Pedestrian Advisory Committee representatives are sitting next to each other. That's a new thing. In the bad old days, it used to be bikes versus pedestrians, and that problem has been solved. And I think now we just need to keep in contact better with our friends in the downtown community who are also similarly passionate about building a beautiful, green, thriving, balanced, multimodal downtown. And that's, I think, what we'll see on Hennepin Avenue. I think that's what we will be able to see in the future going forward. I predict in the next 10 years, we'll come back to Third Avenue and fix this, back to a three-lane road. I'll be happy when we take that vote. But again, we're getting a bike lane here. I'm very excited about that, and I'm appreciative of everyone who worked so hard to make that happen.
Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam President. These concepts of business and pedestrian and bike friendliness, they're not mutually exclusive. It's not the people, it's not like the people who are coming downtown on bikes are stopping and having a cup of coffee, turning around and going home. They're coming down and working the entire day and then returning home on their bikes and walking. And I can tell that a huge percentage of people that live in the central riverfront, especially those that are young professionals, they live there because they don't want to own a car. They, I'll say it again, they don't want to own a car. They have their cell phones and their apps or whatever, and they just want to get from point A to point B with as few hurdles as possible. And, you know, that is a shift in mentality. And it's a shift in mentality that really allows improved communication. And this is really only something that I've discovered since I started biking more. I always used to walk, and of course, I ran a lot. But since I've started cycling, you know, you pull up next to somebody at an intersection, I talk to them, like, we have a conversation. The number of times when you choose to roll down your window in the car and shout over your next-door neighbor's radio are, it's few to none. And so I think this improved communication, I think, it really helps a lot, and it helps people become more connected in and around their neighborhoods. So, you know, this is one instance where I think it ultimately is a success in that we got a protected bike lane. Next up, which inevitably will be more difficult, given the number of feet we have across the street and the density of traffic bikes and pedestrians will be Hennepin. And that's coming in the pipeline in the very near future. So, you know, let's continue to progress here as a city, and I'm very hopeful.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk call the roll on Transportation and Public Works, item number seven.
Councilmember Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmasano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That, those items are adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Committee report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
There are nine items on the agenda from Ways and Means this morning. First is a resolution in support of a Minnesota State Environmental Grant applications. Then item number two is an agreement with Minneapolis Downtown Council for downtown activation. Item three is a contract amendment with NRG Energy Center, Minneapolis. Four is a license agreement with MA Mortenson Company for temporary crane encroachment. Five is the negotiation authorization for potential purchase of 1501 West River Road North.
That, those items are adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Committee report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. There are nine items on the agenda from Ways and Means this morning. First is a resolution in support of a Minnesota State Environmental Grant applications. Then item number two is an agreement with Minneapolis Downtown Council for downtown activation. Item three is a contract amendment with NRG Energy Center Minneapolis. Four is a license agreement with M.A. Mortenson Company for temporary crane encroachment. Five is the negotiation authorization for potential purchase of 1501 West River Road North. Item six is a contract amendment with Deacon International for live moment support. Item number seven is the appointed position of Director of Contract Compliance as, and then there are two collective bargaining agreements. One is with the Trade Inspector's Bargaining Unit, and the other is with the Electrical Technicians Bargaining Unit. I'd like to move all nine items for approval.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means report. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. I just had one comment on item number two. I will support the item, I just wanted to mention that the RCA for it was very nondescript, especially compared to last year's RCA for this item, which actually detailed specifics of what the money would be spent on. And so I just, I'm not real pleased about it. I'll follow up with staff to find out what this money is actually being used for. Obviously, I support activation downtown, I think it's, it's great, and I was happy with what they did in 2015. But I think from a public transparency standpoint, we could be doing a lot, lot better with this particular RCA. So, and I hope in future years, next year, that they actually put some detail in it.
Any further discussion on the Ways and Means report? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Worszami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmasano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Conno?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Glidden?
Aye.
Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Introduction and Referral Calendar, and the first item is a ordinance introduction by Councilmember Bender and Councilmember Reich introducing the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code for first reading and referrals to the Zoning and Planning Committee revising minimum lot area requirements for two-family dwellings in the R2 and R2B zoning districts. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Councilmember Glidden gives pursuant to notice a motion to introduce an ordinance amending the city charter for first reading and referral to the Committee of the Whole for public hearing on April 27, 2016, revising, clarifying, and ensuring consistency in vote thresholds required by the Board of Estimate and Taxation related to the issuance of bonds. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Under Resolutions, we have the Autism Awareness Month Honorary Resolution that was read before the council meeting. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We also have a 2016 Food allergy Awareness Week Honorary Resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We have the Kirk Washington Jr. Honorary Resolution, which was read before the council meeting. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Under Unfinished Business, we have the 20-year Neighborhood Park Plan Resolution. We're, I'm going to move to continue that. Any discussion on the motion to continue? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Under New Business, we have Tailgating Authorized Parking Lots Near U.S. Bank Stadium Ordinance.